All right, we're gonna go ahead and get started. We will call the meeting to order at 6:32. And we are, the board, forum of the board is meeting in person tonight. And we have one more board member who's gonna be joining us in a few minutes. So our first agenda item tonight is the approval of the agenda. Are there any changes or amendments or anything that we need to adjust on the agenda tonight?
The only thing I'm gonna say is our student school board liaison is not able to make it tonight. So we will not have that agenda item. All right.
All right, so we need a motion to approve the agenda as amended. Some, a motion from Denise.
Second.
And a second from Ed. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Okay, so we'll move on to our first agenda item, which is public participation. So we'll open the floor for public participation. We have some folks joining us in person. But I think they're here, I know, for a later on agenda item. But if anybody has any public participation for right now, please feel free. Just a reminder, we do need your name and address stated at the beginning of your remarks. So that it can be on the record. And if you are joining us virtually and you'd like to participate, you can type into the chat. And again, please give us your name and address so that those can be read at the beginning of your remarks. So we'll have a few minutes here and we'll just leave it open. I know sometimes folks need a little second to type. So we'll leave our public participation open.
It looks like we have people. There are six participants on.
Okay, so we know it's working.
And the chat is open. All right. You should know you're all welcome to say anything that you'd like to at this point, too.
We all think you're wonderful. We're very proud of this school.
Yes. All right, I'll just leave it open for just a few more seconds here and then we'll move on. See anything coming in view? Okay, all right, so we'll close public participation and we'll move on to the agenda. The first item on the agenda is to recognize the Grantham Garden Club. And so folks may have noticed either as they've been visiting the school for a drop off or on their way in from meetings that our front garden, our star garden, is in process of getting an incredible makeover. And I'm gonna let Denise speak a little bit about how that project got started because she is actually the, was the impetus for that project to begin. And then we will express our gratitude for all of your participation in that with us.
Thanks. I'm just so pleased to see the faces behind you. The past several years being on the board, I've walked by the star garden and it's a beautiful space, but it's been in disarray for quite some time. And I have a personal connection with it because the artist in residence who designed it is a good friend of mine who is now in very poor health and unable to do any follow up on some of his projects. And so as we often get that helpless feeling when somebody's health is failing, I wanted to do something to help honor him. And so I approached Sydney and the board and said, you know, can I repaint some of these sculptures? And at least try to give them some life. And of course, once you stay, it's like any house project where you start something and you look beyond and say, I'm never gonna get through this. And the fun thing was is that Sydney did an awful lot of the painting. And we don't get to talk with each other much outside of the board meetings. And she got so dirty and had so much fun.
And paint covered.
Yeah, and it was a scary process because I wasn't sure if the paints were gonna be right. But I think in the long run, it's okay. I'm still looking for the trim though, for the metallic. And it's been a long process. But when I walked in tonight, I just looked at what you folks have done. And I just went, oh, I feel so good. So thank you. And it's just, I feel like this is a community space. Our kids, I think with your help especially, is gonna be easier to utilize that outdoor space because it really wasn't safe for inviting. And it just feels good to know that, you know, we've got a great school system here and a great community. And it's, it's just nice to do something when you can. So I'm grateful.
I've already seen some kids sitting on those stars.
Oh, good.
Yeah, and I haven't seen that in the future.
Yeah, well, before it was like trying to get to these things.
So good.
Sydney's gonna text that the link on the GBS website is not working.
I use that link opened and I, that's how I got on.
I can fire it now, too.
Yeah, do you wanna see if it's working?
Sorry, not in real.
No, no, please.
I will say, one of the really unexpected pieces of this project is that our playground project, which is in progress but has been delayed. Because that project is delayed, I was worried that we weren't gonna have something at the start of this year that was gonna look different at the front of the building. And unexpectedly through this project, we now do. And so I think for some people who are looking as they come into the building to see like what's happening with the playground project, we haven't been able to make the progress that we've wanted to on that full project just because of, you know, supply and labor and all of those kinds of things being really challenging right now. But the project that you all have helped us undertake out front has, I think, filled some of that gap to be able to have something visual to say like, here's an improvement, here's something that's happened. And it's been a really great thing, I think, for some folks who have felt like, were things gonna look any different when they pulled in this year? And they do. I mean, it's noticeable from when you're in like the, when all of us parents line up to drop off and pick up, when you're in that line, you're looking at the front of the building and that the big red star is so noticeable now. And you almost couldn't even see it amongst all the plants that were overtaking it. So I think that's been a really nice aspect and unexpected benefit. I think Sydney has a couple other things to share and.
I do. And we did just check the link, it's working. So Kristen went on to the main webpage to get in. But if somebody wants to maybe email or something, we can see if there's, I don't know, some way we can help them.
Yep.
Okay. I just wanted to say how grateful I am and all the conversations that we've had about the garden. And the very first thing that I admitted is that I should not touch any plants. Because then you'd have to really start from scratch. But I'm just so incredibly grateful because, as you know, we've had staffing issues. And that's been one of our biggest, big problems over the last few years. And just the fact that this could be off of Mr. Compo's fleet and his crew. And we could focus on everything that we needed to do inside for the kids, which is always our focus. Like, I just hope you know how much it means to us. It really means a lot to us. And we do have some gifts for you. And I'm really excited about them.
So when Sydney's, I'm gonna out you. When she said to me, we're gonna give them something, but I don't think we should give them plants. Which is our normal, usually we give people plants. We were like.
Flowers a lot. So these are, you know, a part of our garden and all of our project outside is sustainability. So we have these together, we make a difference. But there are, there's a special pen in there. With a reusable straw. And I know that some of the members couldn't make it tonight, so maybe you could take them. But I'm really excited about the pens. Because I couldn't believe I found these. So if you open it up, you have a pen in there that has a really great saying such as, keep going, keep growing, with the little leaf clip. But this is not an eraser. There are seeds in there. So there are a couple of seeds on the top for you to plant. I mean, I think you really can find anything on the internet. I bet you do.
We'll find out.
You'll find out. That's right.
Do you have any samples of Benadryl that you can also?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, so Denise also got the children's Benadryl from the nurse's office and the Wasps daughter in that garden as well. Do you want me to give, here, I'll put extras over here someplace, just so I can make sure that you take them.
And just, just, just so that you all know, this really has been a labor of love. And the garden club members, when we posted it on our website that we needed help, people just signed up, jumped in. These two folks came twice on both days to pitch in. They were particularly hot days that we were out there working. Couldn't do anything about that. Everyone, Toby, Dr. Leggett, Kristen, the whole, have been very friendly and welcoming. Denise, Nancy's part of the garden club. And it was just, it was a pleasure to be able to come and do this. This is not done because that batch is already coming back. So this is something that's gonna have to be maintained. And I've already got contact with the president of the parents group. And we're hoping we can develop some sort of partnership and alliance so that we can do a spring and fall cleanup with the help of the guidance from the garden club members. Make this truly a, you know, embrace it from all aspects of keeping that maintained, long-term plan.
And I was hoping while you're here, you could talk a little bit about your daffodil fundraiser that's going on.
Oh, absolutely. Thank you. Yes, we are selling, the Grantham Garden Club is selling daffodils. And they are naturalizing their deer resistant, which is so nice. And we wanna have color throughout Grantham. This is open to the public. It's not just garden club members. We want everyone participating and uplifting their souls. When spring comes around and the snow is melting and the yellows popping up. And we are asking for people, if they don't wanna plant and or don't have property to plant daffodils, that they become a garden angel and make an order and donate towards purchase of daffodils that will be utilized here at the school and other locations in Grantham. So a dollar a ball. And I don't know the deadline date, but it's this month. It's not too far away. And people just need to go to granthamgardenclub.org. And right on the homepage, we've made it right there, the flyer with the details about the daffodils. If people wanna know details about what the daffodils are, we have selected, as well as the order form. And so people will need to fill that out, write out a check and mail it into the garden club. So we're hoping we get a lot of community support for that.
So your deadline is Monday, September 26. And I will put that in my family newsletter.
And I'll put it in my superintendent newsletter as well.
I wanna bring your attention to the insert. This is spectacular. The FSC is the Orangery Sustainability Council. It's international. They approve anything which is completely sustainable. And my daughter is the science director. Small world.
I knew it was sustainable, but I didn't know the connection with your daughter. That's perfect.
And thank you.
Yes.
You're gonna continue to see us out there.
And we still owe you a removal of one of the bushes out there. Nothing yet. Yeah, we're waiting, still waiting for our excavator.
And if I can just say, not only have adults noticed, but I've heard a couple of kids make mention to how good it looks. So. Thank you.
But emphasizing texture and smell so that the kids have different kinds of experiences as they walk through the garden. We hope that the decision on plants will allow us to do that.
Great. Well, we have a lot of plants coming. And it's a question of moving on to put them and how many works can they will use? Because it's been amazing, the effort of donated plants. Some will go in now, over the next month, and some will go in the spring.
And Kathy Martin, kindergarten teacher, was able to get some donations from her employer that she worked for this summer. So like 30 plants, close to 30.
That's fantastic.
So we're very grateful. And garden club members will have lots of plants, I'm sure, that everybody will. Once it's, once you're figured out what's gonna be going there. So, yeah, exciting. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very, very much. I know, I know that you were hoping for a picture. Do you wanna do a picture on this rainy night? Or do you wanna save it for another time where maybe the whole group is together?
Oh, that's a good idea.
You would do that on a sunny day where all of the volunteers are there.
Right.
But we can do it now if you're. It's not as nice right now.
Thank you all. And I will say, you are absolutely welcome to stick around and listen to the rest of our work. But we also are not offended if you just get up and sort of slide right towards the door. We are used to folks coming at the beginning of our agenda, being recognized and then making them, making their exit. So thank you all very, very much. All right, our next agenda item is the food service transfer. And the board has a memo for this in our board packet. So the request is to transfer $16,395.55 for food services during the 2021-22 school year.
Yeah, this, we usually, this is about, it's $7,104.45 less than the originally budgeted, $23,500. And as you know, the last couple of years, we have been this much over and this much under. We really have had a roller coaster with food services over the last few years, which of course is understandable. But this year, we just happened to be under.
Any questions about this or?
Like saving money?
Okay, so we need a motion to approve the food services transfer for the 21-22 school year. So moved. I've got a motion from Leslie and a second from Ed. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Okay, excellent. All right, our next agenda item, we also have in our board packet, and this is the additional work, parking lot. And we have discussion and action on this item.
Right, so you have the actual proposal in front of you, which is a total of $11,000, which comes to pre-grant support because we're working on, part of this is grants, design documentation, which would be $7,250, and permitting, which would be $2,750. And I just am gonna share my screen so that you can all see some of the concerns that have come up and a couple of options of how the board would like to move forward. So if we have. So essentially, well, we have our thank you to the Grantham Garden Club. So this is an additional proposal, which is the court slope and parking area. So a brief summary of the concern is that we removed the basketball court from the larger project of the GBS grounds renovation and playground project due to costs. We were trying to make sure that we cut down those costs. And we decided that we would work on grant writing to resurface the basketball court. What happened was the initial survey work shows that the court pitch and foundation is off by up to about a foot, I would say. Yes, in some areas, particularly the back right corner when you're looking from the schoolyard. So when Mr. Compo and I were out looking around the first day after we realized this, you can actually very clearly see the fencing hit the asphalt all the way around until you get to the corner and you can just see like the huge gap happening right there. So there really is no sense in resurfacing a court that has a poor foundation. It's just gonna be throwing away money. In addition, there have been many years of concern over the parking lot and runoff from that same far corner due to the slope failure and the lack of drainage and the drainage design at that, at that, you know, confluence of where everything is running off from that court pitch. And this has actually come up in several years of our joint last management committee meetings because of concerns of slip and fall because it just turns to ice. So a couple of pictures is, if you see here on the left, if you're looking at, the school's on the left, obviously. And then you're gonna be looking at the court and you can just see in this area right here in the corner of the court, that's where the failure is happening. This slope is coming down, so that's where the pitch is off. And then if you see, it's easier to see in the picture on the right, where all of the sand is collecting and everything, that in the winter is all ice. And that just shows where there's no drainage and, you know, improper runoff, which is, you know, hard when it comes to sand and water in, you know, this time of year. But really awful when it comes to snow and ice the rest of the year. And you can actually see Mr. Compo right there, his shadow taking the picture for us.
But that, that sand was swept up this spring. So that's all the basketball court from the summer. That's there now.
And it was a dry summer, too. So. So a couple of options for your consideration with this proposal. Because remember, this is just the proposal to look at the design and engineering and survey work. So we can hold off for now on the survey and design and make the court/parking lot a phase three of the project for a future year. You know, the pavilion is phase one, the main part of the project is phase two. We could just push off the court and the parking lot and make that phase three. Another option is to incorporate this work into the larger main GBS grounds and playground project and ensure separate funding source for this work. We wanna make sure that we do that legally because, given the bond, we can't just suddenly throw in parking lot work. You know, we have to be really careful that even if we do the work at the same time, that this has a different funding source, you know, from the community. Some of the pros of this is that there's efficiency of scale because like the equipment and the contractor would already be on site. So you could think of, you're just getting it done while you're ripping everything else up, basically. And then a third option would be, you could approve this work, this proposal in front of you for the site survey and design engineering. Wait to see where the bids come in for the main project and then decide from there. So you could just kind of see, you know, have this part of the work done and then decide at a later date if you want to pursue this as part of a bigger project or hold off for another year. So if option three is there, that would also imply that we would have to hire again the same people who will already be here if we chose phase two. Is that correct? No, you could just, I assume it would be over, our bid would definitely be over $10,000. So you would, you could just, if it's a phase three, you could just put it out to bid again at whatever point you decide to do it.
So regardless of what option we take, we have, we have to at least in the design documentation for anything goes up to bid anyways, regardless, right?
You do, yes. But you also don't have to do that now. We can proceed with the rest of the main project. And we would just basically ignore the court and the parking lot area for now.
I think it's worth the $11,000 to know, at least get the docs in place. You know, if we don't do it, even if we do it as a sort of phase three, get the docs in place and have a sense of what we're looking at. Because that's the other piece. It's gonna be tough to fundraise and break grants and you don't have an idea of what exactly you're working, you know, the cost. So I would think the proposal, you, I mean, may hold off on the permitting, the $27.50 for the permitting, until you know, obviously a year ago. But the first two, the grant support and the design docs, I'm not sure I see any reason why to pull back on doing those now. Let's get the information.
It could also, another benefit of doing that would be you could see where the budget development takes us for FY '24 this year, you know? And it could be something that you decide to put in the budget for next year, depending on how much we think it will be.
Is this a group talking about what they're planning, what their thoughts on how to correct it? Would it be a retaining wall built or?
Well, there's, we have the option because the basketball court's in pretty bad shape. It's actually splitting because of sink and wire. So if that was dug up, the ultimate kind of be, would be to slide it over a little bit, leave room to possibly put some drainage or drainage contours before the drive. Then we could, the driveway does need to be repitched, too, because that's, that's a settling point where you see the sand. So the driveway has to be dealt with. But at least, if we move the core, the land workage could help also, so.
And I would think we probably, and I know the SC group has done all the work for the playground stuff. I think it'd probably be helpful to have them to have that information. You know, it's part of that to make sure we don't start encroaching too much on whatever we, especially, what are you talking about, moving it five, 10 feet?
Yeah, not much, just because right now there's, I mean, that's why we have to have a steep cliff because it's right up the butt of the ground. If you get moving over, right, 10 feet or so, then you have room to make some drainage or something. So that would help a lot.
And we're lucky, we do have wiggle room. It's not, not too much of a big deal, just to move it over.
Basically, one over to a field, so.
And part of this, part of what they talked about in the, in this proposal is looking at, I think was looking at, yeah, so looking at some of the, with some of that, the permitting that Ed was mentioning, would that change anything related to? I know that that gets us, that's one of the close points for some of that, the like watershed or the.
The shoreline.
Yeah, with this.
That's the closest where we are. So for example, if it would, it would drastically affect permitting because that's the closest point to the river. And what you would have to do is, basically, they talked about making it an added alternative if you added it to the bid. So if, if at some point you look at the design that comes back and the bids come in and you decide that you wanna throw it on, you could say to the contractor, you know, we wanna do this. But then it would have a significant addition of altered terrain for that permit. So you would wanna start the process early because right now we're still hearing that permits are taking at least six months to come through.
But this would be a separate shoreline, shoreline per permit from our actual playground.
If it goes as part of a project, it would be like an amendment to our permit. So we would still have to let them know, but it would still, according to Horizons, it would be part of our original AOT and shoreline.
If we did it at the same time.
If we did it at the same time.
And if we didn't, we'd have to, it's gonna be on the permit.
Yeah.
Because that's not a decision we need to make.
No.
Anytime in the very near future, right?
No, because you would probably wanna see, you know, what their plan would be first, what their recommendations would be first.
And so, and they would do this in, within the scope of what they're already planning for the playground project. So that would be, like, they already have that information of, like, if we think about those three options you gave us.
Yeah.
And it, like, what, and what, echoing what Ed was saying, they would have kind of that, if we went with a third one, they would have that base knowledge. Where if like, if we just went with the first one where we just put it off entirely, we could be talking to somebody who is somebody entirely different.
Right now.
Yeah, it seems like that third option makes the most sense to me.
Do we run into issues here since this is over $10,000?
No, because you've already selected SC group. Yeah, that already did go out to bed, so. I wouldn't see any reason why this would have to be an additional bid. This would be an add-on to what you've already put out there.
Could we approve just the pre-grant, the design docs first and then add the permitting as a change order later on in the process?
Yes, you can.
I think I'd be in favor of just approving $82.50, $82.50 the first to start with. And then we'll add on, we could add on the permitting work once we have a direction of what, which way we're gonna go.
Any other thoughts on? Any other thoughts on that? Alright, so it sounds like there's support for the third option. Limiting it to the pre-grant support and the design documentation. Okay, so we would need a motion to approve the additional work on the parking lot for the pre-grant support and design documentation with SC group.
So move.
Second, if a motion from Ed and a second from Leslie, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Alright, our next agenda item.
Before we go off this, on your, on your diagram that you have, I wanted to show you that one of the decisions that is going to be coming up is trees. So, um, so Emily Owens, who's our clerk of the works and project manager and Toby Campo, facilities director went through and marked existing trees that have not succumbed to the Emerald Ashwood and then recommendations for newer replacement trees. And that's the document that you're looking at. Some of the questions that we wanted to bring to the board and for tonight and for kind of the future, because we don't have to decide absolutely everything right now, but if you have an opinion about the tree lining the fence. If you would want to voice that opinion right now, that would be great. We're trying to actually pull the trees away from the building for homeland security issues. We don't know what your feelings are about having sort of the tree lining the fence or having it open.
How does that tie in with homeland security of the fence?
Well, we thought a little bit about that and, you know, somebody can jump that fence. Like the idea with a tree next to the building is somebody can climb a tree and get into the building or get on the roof, right? Somebody could, I mean, the fence isn't that high, so somebody wouldn't need a tree to access. You know, get over that fence. It would be more of a visibility concern. So if we chose trees that actually were, you know, taller and you know, we still have visibility around the fence, would you want that kind of tree line or would you prefer that it actually just stays completely open? And, you know, I don't know if Toby or Kristen would like to offer their opinions at all.
So in terms of children playing outside, I really like the idea of having trees in the bad shade and they can get out of the hot sun.
Any maintenance issues with it being next to the fence and we's falling in the fall and all that fun? Tree stuff.
The leaves and such, I mean, those are a big deal. I would relocate them maybe a foot further in those trees, I believe on a map, I haven't seen that a little bit, but I think those are all where the existing trees are now.
The orange ones. Are the existing ones.
The green ones on the perimeter. Other than the one we're about where the dugout is that was added in, but I think most of these accounted for what we had out there, the ones that are dying now. So I don't think that was going to be a huge change anyway, just like I would try to relocate them in a little further so we could maintain the lawn around.
And no root concerns with that being that close to asphalt with
They're probably 10, 12 feet away from the asphalt. So I think we're fairly safe there.
How many trees are we losing at this point to disease?
Basically that whole drive around, they're, they're all, if they're not dead, they're, they're starting.
That's really sad and that's a risk too.
Yeah, well that, yeah, that's why we're trying to definitely get away from that, that type of tree also. I threw on here sugar maples just as a suggestion, but I know some of the teachers are talking about doing maple sugar and projects and stuff, so just kind of threw that out and then the color of the leaves and falls, so. That's just, I'm, I'm no tree person. You guys figure it out.
Should have asked the garden club.
We've asked them for a lot of for helping us figure out the grasses for the hill.
I think trees, having trees out there is great. I mean, I think they're like a, a touch point for kids to go to. Like even if they're not going to like do something at the tree, it's a like thing to go and play here. And just being on different playgrounds, the ones with trees are just much more inviting and having that shade is really important.
And if you're spending all this time creating a, an interactive play area, why wouldn't you want to have a lot of trees and just, it seems so vital to the design and
Any other Nancy or Leslie, Ed? Thumbs up.
Love them, sharing an idea.
Okay, our next agenda item is the JPGR public relations and a discussion of that and we don't have I don't think this is even our
No, just, that was just a Last year, uh, the board contracted with John Gilfoyle Public Relations and they came in really handy. We had a lot of really big things last year. We had, um, the playground, we had school nurse of the year, we had Blue Ribbon School. It was a very big year. And I'm just thinking, I was just looking at our budget, which in my report you saw is pretty tight due some, due to some unanticipated costs that have already come up. So I am recommending that we do not continue our contract with them this year, but of course it's your decision if you'd like to keep them going.
I support not leaving the contract with them.
And there isn't an issue with you discontinuing when you can end of the year.
You don't need to vote or anything.
Alright, so our next agenda item is updates on COVID and COVID policies. This is coming back to us for, particularly for us to look at some of the items in our COVID addendum for parents, families and staff with the changes from the CDC.
So I just put, I tried to simplify things by just putting a slide together of the COVID strategy, the current GBS protocol in our COVID addendum and what the change in the CDC guidance is. Um, because they didn't change everything, they just changed some key things. So, um, there's a change in return to school testing after somebody is COVID positive. So what's currently in our protocol is that parents guardians may use an FDA approved homeschool or provider test to return after day five. If negative, students must remain masked through day 10. When they return, the change in the CDC guidance is that there is no test required to return to school after day five. If students are 24 hours fever free with improving symptoms, but everybody must remain masked through day 10. Um, so that's one change. In terms of quarantine, the current GBS protocol, which was the New Hampshire protocol, was household contacts who are unvaccinated or not up to date must quarantine for five days. The change in the CDC guidance is that household contacts do not have to quarantine, but anybody who's exposed, so a household contact must wear a mask for 10 days after exposure. It does say anybody who's exposed must wear a mask and they don't have to quarantine. The reason we focused on household, household contacts is because that was the only difference. Compared to the New Hampshire DHHS guidance and CDC in this area. As in terms of surveillance testing, uh, GBS offers bi-weekly surveillance testing as an opt-in program. The change in the CDC guidance is that they no longer recommend surveillance testing except at times of an outbreak or a pending situation of risk. So they would say if you have an outbreak, you could do surveillance testing or if, for example, you've got like a big you know, prom coming up or something like that, they might recommend surveillance testing. The lab that we work with does not offer that kind of ad hoc testing. It's either we do it on a regular rotation or we don't do it at all. Or we would have to do the surveillance testing on our own, um, on an ad hoc basis if we decided to do it that way. And then, um, masking is the current GBS protocol discusses or states that wears masking when returning after isolation through day 10, voluntary masking and when asked for specific people in situations. And then the change in the CDC guidance is masking when returning from isolation after day five, that's coming back after positive. And for a full 10 days when exposed regardless of vaccination status or prior infection date. There are a couple of other changes in the CDC guidance for schools that they don't apply to us. You know, there's like a test to state guidance, but we are not a test to state, state. There's only 11 states that follow that. And then there's one more that doesn't apply to us, so I don't remember what it is. So these are the big ones and so, um, the board will need to decide if you want to change to update our guidance and our protocols to follow the new CDC guidance.
I will say from, um, progress monitoring, there was similar support to, I think, what the board conversation was around surveillance testing. It was the, you know, since our, the, since the company that we use doesn't offer kind of that like ad hoc to like bring them in if there was an outbreak or a situation of risk. And since it's not a cost to us and it's an opt-in program for families, there didn't really seem to be a downside to doing that as long as we have the resources and the availability of, you know, both Karen's support for her time and what she's able to do. And the, the company that can do it with us. So there was support for keeping the surveillance testing in place as we've had it.
Who, who picks up the tab for this surveillance testing?
The state.
Still.
For another year.
Regardless of the CDC's, CDC says.
We won't ask too loud.
Right.
I was, I was past couple of weeks on CDC and I can't believe how many things I was looking at saying in the process of updating or it was just so you couldn't get all the answers that you wanted with the information and it is frustrating.
For the first time since COVID began, the New Hampshire DHHS guidance is the CDC guidance.
Yeah, it's just a link.
Yeah, it's just a straight link to the CDC guidance. So there is something nice about that, that we're not juggling two different, you know, protocols, you know, between state and federal, so.
Yeah, I would agree. I mean, I don't see any reason why we can get rid of this surveillance testing.
Yeah, especially if it's opted in.
Costing us a dime and it's opt-in.
Have to monitor if there was an outbreak.
In terms of, um, return to school testing, there, there didn't seem to be, uh, like there wasn't a strong support from, uh, the progress monitoring to to not have the return to school testing. Our conversation was more focused on that initial testing, just that change that the, that we had made at the last meeting. So there wasn't like a strong, um, you know, feeling that we need to eliminate the day five or after test. I don't know, folks have other thoughts on that one or questions about if we take kind of each one of these one by one? I will say there was still support for, um, I think a pretty common, you know, they're seeing in from the providers that are on the progress monitoring committee that folks are still, there are still a number of positives happening. You know, people are testing positive day five, day six, day seven, that is still very common. And so eliminating that testing, you are, there is an increased risk of, um, you know, someone coming back into school who is still has that higher level of viral load. Um, where they are still testing positive because that's what those, you know, those tests are, are looking for that kind of active viral load in people's nasal passages.
Like you said, I didn't see anything in the progress monitoring committee notes about the test to return question. I kind of wish Karen was here. I can look at attendees, but because I feel like we really pushed the envelope last month, which I'm okay with, but this is like another pretty big push. And I'm struggling because I just you know, so much of society is moving quickly, kind of trying to put a lot behind them and it's just the tension we were talking about last month too. Being thoughtful, protecting as many people as possible and also like psychologically, our society wants to be moving as quickly forward as possible, so. I sort of feel like I like the day five testing, but also feels a little arbitrary given this guidance now, so. We'll stuck on that one.
I will say just, you know, before we, and we can go back to kind of taking each one. I meant to say this before, but I, I will say my, my feeling on it at this point, because we're on day four. Was today day four of school? Finished day four? I keep in mind that idea of like peeling back those layers a little bit at a time and I think we, we peeled one or two back. You know, at our last meeting and then had the opening of school. I know today was the first, um, you know, email that went out to families that there are two, that, you know, there were two positive cases with students today. And so this is sort of our first, like we're, this is our first testing the waters of walking into those waters of what does it look like to have some of those strategies that we had in place not there anymore. Um, and so I, I think I am at this point, and I'm interested to see where the conversation with the whole board goes. I would lean more towards leaving our current protocols in place, knowing that we peeled back a couple of those layers before and we're only on day four. Seeing where we are, you know, just as we have each month, kind of seeing what it looks like. And then, you know, reevaluating in October, November, whatever the case may be. But I think the tricky thing is if we pull back a lot of those layers, we don't know which ones to put back as those, because that's one of the things in the, in the CDC guidance is very heavy on go ahead and layer things back in. When you, if cases get high, if there's outbreaks, if your community level is high, put but I was thinking like, how do you know which one to put back in? Like, is it the surveillance testing? Is it the requiring more masking? Is it, you know, like what are those pieces that come back in? And that would require a, a lot of either the board to make a lot of very what we tried to avoid last year of that kind of like if then, so like if the level goes high here, that means that the superintendent decides to do XYZ or it means a lot of like emergency meetings for the board, like layering those strategies back in, I think is something that's very easy for the CDC to suggest and very difficult to actually do on the ground. And so for me, since we know that we've peeled back some of those layers to start the year and we're only a few days into the year, leaving those current protocols in place and then reevaluating as we go, knowing that we have some flexibility where we can pull some things back. If it seems like we're able to, um, is where I'm coming at from for all of these, I think. Yeah.
Kristin, I'm curious, in your like, um, hierarchy of needs triage, I'm not sure what phrase I want to use. I'm just thinking back to last year and a lot of times, one of the bigger concerns, I guess, was staffing and so when I'm sitting here thinking about, one of my big takeaways from looking at the CDC website was like, you know, we're in a phase of pandemic where risk of hospitalization and death is dramatically lower than it ever was before. We have a lot of data now about kids getting COVID and you know, it's, we know, we know a lot now that we didn't even know a year ago. And so I get what I'm asking is like, do you, what are, when you think of like, again, hierarchy of needs or hierarchy of concerns, maybe just illuminate like the top three, when you think about pulling back layers or probably I'm sure that some of the tension in your own mind of keeping everyone safe and well, but you know, also like the tactical parts of what we're thinking about.
Yeah, no, I, you know, obviously I want everyone to be healthy, right? But absences for staff and students are both super difficult, you know, for staff. You can't run a building without the staff here, but for students, it adds a whole other layer of you know, even if they're healthy enough, right? We have to provide them their education. We have to catch them up. We have to provide homework. We have, so absences on either level are, are huge, but I wouldn't sacrifice people's health just to have more people in, in the building.
Well, I think about all the time we spent last month getting to this point and like we just said, it's only four days in. And, um, I feel comfortable with what we had discussed. Um, I know I trust Karen Islander totally. Uh, I know we all want to put this behind us, but I feel like let's give this some time to be put in place and evaluated. I think this is a more responsible way of dealing with what could potentially happen. And I get it, I want to move on too. what could potentially happen. And I get it, I want to move on too, but I, I look at the changes in the CDC and I personally not comfortable with some of them.
I, I do want to chime in just to say that there's one that we're going to have to follow legally, which is we will not be able to have students quarantine.
Yeah, I was just looking at that one.
So that one, that one shouldn't be on the table for for discussion is that we won't be able to tell students that they can't come to school.
I was just thinking about that. Can we do we have the latitude to follow the CDC guidance and say mask for 10 days? What's the, I will say, what's the logistics in reality of that?
You can do the masking through day 10. There's no problem that for anybody who's coming back after being positive or anybody who is exposed, right? And then the other thing that you would really need to, and then it sounds like we want to continue with surveillance testing because nobody's forced to do it, you know, it's just an opt-in. So you'd really have to decide if you would still like to have a return to school test after being positive.
So that's really, that's Any other thoughts on?
I struggle with this somewhat because what we've been saying for the last two years is we've been relying on CDC guidelines to sort of shape our our policies here and, you know, the, the arguments were, you know, follow the CDC, all of the stuff and now when they do make a change, now we're saying, well, maybe we don't want to. That, that's, I think that's the piece I struggle with most is either follow the guidance or don't. But I'm not. I think I would be more in favor of just moving to the CDC guidance. I mean, we're, we're only talking that top one. But I'm not.
I think one of the things that I struggle with and, and I mentioned it before is I, I feel like the CDC guidance relies really heavily on this idea of like, but go ahead and change any of this when your levels get too high and that's really difficult. I mean, that's, and that was something that we struggled with last year because we said like, what is that? Does that mean like if our levels are high for a day? Does that mean we go to test to return? If the level, does it have to be we have high levels for two weeks? What happens if we have high level for a week and then it goes back down again? Does test to return go away? And so I feel like the CDC guidance really relied on that, like we're giving you the guidance, but you should always like, you should always flex these things in response to what's happening in your community. And the reality of being able to do that and implement that is real, that's, that's where I run into trouble with that. Particularly with the return to school testing. Because we have to, that requires us to set up this whole matrix and that whole flow chart of if it's, if there's X number of cases in one classroom, does that mean we go to return to school testing or does that classroom now have to mask? Does the whole school, you know, like we get into, I, I feel like that was the one place in the CDC, CDC guidance that I felt like it wasn't as much follow the science as it was. And if we do follow the science, it's saying when things are at a high level, put some of these measures back in place. And, and practically, how, how do you do that?
Do you have any idea what the science is behind why the CDC made that change in the first one?
You mean for the return?
Yeah.
And they, they cited specifically the strain that's out right now. That was the reason.
The what?
The specific strain that's out right now.
You mean the variants?
Yeah, that it's after five days. Tends people tend not to test positive as frequently.
If they are, if they are improving symptoms.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
But if I'm hearing you right, essentially for the bottom three quarantines, well, the quarantine to masking, we would move to the CDC guidelines.
Yeah, quarantine, we have to.
We have to and then
Mask, masking is pretty much.
Essentially what we're doing.
Yeah, it's
So with the testing on day five, parents can ask Karen to do that still. Right? Because one thing I'm thinking about is even from my perspective, it's, you can still get to the store and get a test usually, but it is increasingly harder. It used to be just sign up and get some food and send to your house. It's not that hard, but you know, equity and money and access and things like that, I certainly do think about, but since Karen is still willing to do maybe day five testing. It makes me feel a little less concerned about it. I don't know, I'm also struggling just from a health perspective. I know that basically like we do need, we need like germs to circulate through us, like it's part of why we're where we are now with COVID, meaning like so many people have had it, especially in the last 12 months. It gets us to like a technically a better place with public health where we have to worry less about it. So that's just one thing that's in my mind, but I very much respect, you know, the, I, the principle of the thing here is like, it's still a virulent thing that happens in our communities. And so if we have lots of kids out or lots of staff out, that is a real challenge.
Other thoughts? I feel like I have a clear, like we were just saying, I have a clear sense for that will adopt the CDC guidance for quarantine, we'll keep our surveillance testing. The masking is pretty much in line with what we're doing. What are, I don't have as much of a sense of where we're leaning on the return to school testing.
I still support day five testing.
Our protocol.
Yeah. That's how I'm feeling as well.
Yeah, I would, I'd be fine with that as long as maybe in October we revisit it and we have thirty days later and see what's going on.
Yep, you can do that. Okay, so we need a motion to adopt the CDC guidance in terms of quarantine. That's all we need, right? Because our surveillance testing is staying as is and the masking is covered. Okay, so we need a motion to adopt the CDC guidance regarding quarantine and update the COVID addendum. With a motion from Leslie and a second from Nancy, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye, any opposed, say nay. Okay, all right. Our next agenda item is community budget forum. So typically in October, we hold a we kick off our budget season with a budget forum for that's open to the community and we just talk through the budgeting process, what it looks like for the year. This generated feels like lifetimes ago now. This was, um, we did, we were, we held it in October to kind of kick off the budget season and also because we do want to recognize and value the input of folks who are living here in Grantham seasonally. And we know that a lot of folks leave around that time of year for warmer destinations. And so giving those folks a chance to engage in that process and see kind of the budget season kickoff. And it's also a chance for us to kind of highlight some of what we anticipate will be the major themes or things coming up through the budget. We've done it on Zoom only, right? The last two, three?
Three.
Several years. And so we can decide, do we want to, we should decide tonight, do we want to have a community budget forum? And what kind of venue do we want to hold that in and when? I think it's a good kickoff. You know, to, to talk through the budget process and be kind of transparent about that for folks. It's not something that usually we do outside of a board meeting. It's another night. It's not something that we need to have. Like, we don't have a quorum of the board there. You know, there's not, usually Sydney.
I usually go through what goes into a budget development process, you know, Q and A about the budget, some big things that might be coming up that year. And, you know, anything else that anybody would like to know about what happens in a school budget.
Last year it was just the three of us, wasn't it? And we did it soon.
And like literally just the three of us, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's what I was thinking about.
It was a short meeting.
I do know that this year there's been a lot of discussion about the reassessment. So you know, there could be heightened interest this year about, you know, how all the
What is that?
How all the percentages and the rates work and how everything shakes out in the end.
I was just going to ask, are, are we going to have the, the Grantham rates by October?
We should. Our, our DOE twenty-five is finished.
Okay.
So that's already ready to go to the town. It's already been submitted to DRA. Meredith did a phenomenal job. And so it, we, we can get that to the town and then it's just, the town will usually be ready in October. So if we're finished or if we plan something, I would say by the end of October, we should be good.
I think you, I think you'd be better off waiting
Yeah.
For that new rate to come out because people were somewhat confused on how reassessment works.
So the check you're right might be exactly the same. Right? Even if your home
Everyone forgets about the actual tax rate. They just see their assessed value.
Right.
Apply what the current rate is, so.
Yeah.
I think having that information temper a lot of
Yeah.
You know, sidetracked discussions.
Now, I should, I should check with Melissa White about when they think they'll do the tax rate setting because I know that, that we're in a thirty day period where people can challenge their reassessment, right? So I don't know if that actually, I don't know if that actually puts off when they do the
Hold this if we're going to do it by Zoom, any reason we can do it in November?
Usually because we have our first, our first November board meeting is our first budget. That's when we start here, like we usually try to do it before the November meeting so that we can like outline what the whole project process looks like. And then the first November board meeting is our first budget. Yeah.
Yep.
But we could hold off scheduling it. We could find out from Melissa and then we could schedule it.
Do we have to have a certain number of days before that?
No, but you know, I don't know what you think about Zoom versus, you know, we try to help hold it at Eastman. I don't know where your thoughts are on that.
I like the convenience of Zoom.
I think I do Zoom.
Yeah.
And that way, people that have already escaped the
Gone to warmer patches.
It was chilly one morning last week.
All right, so let's, we will plan to hold one in October and we'll decide the date in, at our October meeting. Okay, and, okay. Our next agenda item is the School Board Association, Association Delegate Assembly. So the assembly is Saturday, October first. So our first thing is to decide is someone available and interested or willing to go to the New Hampshire School Board Association Delegate Assembly. That decides how much more we have to talk about. If no one can go, then we don't have to talk about it anymore. But if someone is able and willing and interested in going.
Interested but unable, one of these years.
Me too. I am interested, but I am also unable this year. I went last year. October first, yeah, it's a Saturday. It's, I think it starts at eleven.
I don't know what happens at those meetings.
So what happens is it's a, a delegate from every every school board in the state is invited to attend. You have one delegate who is a voting, you know, if you are the one delegate from your board, you are there as a voting member. The proposed resolutions that school boards have brought forward to this association are presented before the whole delegate assembly and they're voted on. They're discussed and voted on. Every school board, if you're sending a delegate, is supposed to have reviewed those resolutions ahead of time and decided as a board how they are sending their delegate to vote. So you don't have to decide like on your own that day. If we, if, if you decided to go, we would as a board, look at all of the resolutions and tell you on our behalf, please vote yes for this one, no for this one. Don't vote at all for that one. And then there's also like a business portion of the meeting where they talk about, you know, those reports from the officers. Sometime, last year they didn't, but sometimes they do a presentation from a school board, a school board of the year, whatever, like a school board that one school board of the year will give a presentation. And then sometimes they'll do one from like another district that's done some kind of like outstanding program or event. But and it's, it's not required that we go. They have to have a certain number of boards in attendance. But sometimes we go, sometimes we don't.
So there's no pressure.
Yeah. It's interesting, but
I, I would be unavailable for this one.
Yeah, I'm not.
Saturday, not around unfortunately.
I feel like I'm still getting my feet.
No problem.
Yeah.
Yeah, no problem. So we will not have somebody go this year, which is totally fine. After, so in, in our email, you should have an email from the School Board Association that has the resolutions that have been brought forward this year. If you're interested in looking at them, they're very interesting this year, I will say. And what those do, those resolutions are, those are the guiding resolutions for the School Board Association for their legislative work, for their advocacy. So those are the positions that the boards have told the association, take these positions on our behalf when you are doing your legislative advocacy work. So, you know, you'll, you'll, in the list of ones that are being proposed, there's everything from like, you know, yes, we think this should move forward to, no, we don't because this is already addressed in a resolution that we already have or in fourteen resolutions we already have. You know, this is, or this is in conflict with another resolution that we have, or this is not something that should come up as a resolution, but we're going to address it. So like, that's how the student school board scholar, the student school board member scholarship came to be. A school board put that forward as a resolution. The association said, this isn't a resolution, but we want to do this if the body would like us to. Everybody voted and said, yes, please do it. Now there's scholarship. So that's, and they'll send out, you know, what happened, happened within half a minute. All right, excellent. All right, so our next agenda item is policies and we have our investment policy, which is DFA. And then we have the public participation at board meetings, which is BEDH. So we'll take policy DFA, which is the investment policy first.
The reason this one is in front of you tonight is because it's a legal requirement that you review and reaffirm it annually. There are no changes to the policy.
Any questions about that one? So we need a motion to approve policy DFA. So a motion from Leslie and a second from Denise. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, any opposed, say nay. All right, and then policy BEDH, this is in accordance with a new law. And this is regarding public participation at board meetings.
So there are a lot of different ways that you could consider doing this, but I put forward suggestions in bold and italics of what I thought would work for the Grantham board meetings. So there's a new legal requirement that there is offered a minimum of thirty minutes of public input. We usually don't have thirty minutes of public input, so we don't want to have just a thirty minute period where everybody's sitting here. So basically, the way that I put it in would be that you can always extend it from thirty minutes longer, which you've done in the past when we do have a lot of public input. So it can always be longer. If for some reason we don't have enough speakers at the beginning of the meeting to exhaust the full thirty minutes, the board will provide the opportunity at the end of the meeting prior to any non-public session for a second session of public comment of no less than the balance of thirty minutes. So you know, ten minutes at the beginning, then there's nobody there. We say we'll open it up for another twenty minutes. If we fill those twenty minutes, that's fine. If there's only five minutes of speaking there, then we've met that requirement. So when the second session is complete or there are no more speakers, the public session requirement is met. And the only other change in there is that there is a new law that nobody can speak about any individual board member employee with the exception of the superintendent. law that nobody can speak about any individual board member employee with the exception of the superintendent. I am the only employee of the school board. So that's the only exception where somebody can, you know, speak to the board about superintendent.
I found a typo.
Excellent.
Moment. Yeah. Um, in, in item number four.
Yes.
Um, there's the clause, the board will not hear personal complaints of any, I think it meant any sort against an individual or member, just individuals a couple of times.
Okay. In public session, the board will not hear personal complaints.
Of any sort against an individual.
Yeah, yeah.
Or maybe it's or.
Of any individual against an individual.
Personally complaints of any individual.
So it shouldn't be sort instead of individual.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Maybe of any sort against an individual or member. And, yeah.
Good catch.
Thank you.
Thanks, Christine.
Otherwise, it's great. And I appreciated the way, the, the, what you put in there. Sydney, that makes sense to me.
There, you're open to other options. You know, you could you know, you could have another session in the middle of the meeting, you know, I don't know. It's, it's up to you, but I thought this would work for the way that the meetings run.
No, I was just gonna say, in a certain way, I actually kind of appreciate the spirit here, which I often have felt like there are people sitting at the meeting who would probably like to hear what we are talking about, saying, doing, and have some time at the end to ask questions or process in the way it's healthy for, that's the intent.
Right.
So it's healthy for community participation.
I think that one of the nicest things about this law going through is that before it passed, the New Hampshire School Board Association put in language stating that the state board has to live by this requirement as well. Hmm. And that went through. So then the state board, who hasn't had any public comment in several years, is now also required to have a minimum of thirty minutes of public comment.
Correctly, just to take effect at the October boarding.
Yes.
Does the chat remain open then?
So what happens is the chat's open whenever public input is open and then it closes whenever you're in your business session of the meeting. So basically with this, we would reopen the chat whenever we reopen public comment.
But like this evening, we, we didn't have it open for ten minutes.
No. But just, but we waited and there was nobody running to.
So we would just keep track of how long.
We would time it.
We had had it open.
Yeah.
And then we would reopen it.
But we don't have to keep it open the second time for the remaining balance, right?
No.
One stocking.
No, as long as the offer is there.
So wait, so we could have it open for three minutes at the beginning and then open it again and have no one do it and close it?
If we have, if we have offered it again, you, you can't have your, the board sit there for twenty-five minutes doing nothing, for example, before you go into a non-public session. Just to, you know, to fill the time limit.
For some reason, I thought that wasn't an option. Allowed under the
I brought the
Of, of course, the timing of it isn't great, but I did sign up for the School Board Association webinar about this, but it's not
It's not.
Happening in
Yep.
Soon. Well, it's soon, but it's not in time for, it's not happening now. Yeah.
So I brought the, I brought the law with me. So here are the options. You can allow more than the required thirty minutes. You can break the thirty minutes into more than one session. Or you can include a provision to the effect that if there are not enough speakers at the beginning of the meeting to exhaust the full thirty minutes, the board will provide opportunity at the end of the meeting for additional public comment of no less than the balance of the thirty minutes.
So that so we'd have to have it, it would have to be for twenty-seven minutes.
Yeah, but
That's, I'm not, it was, that was deeply argued during the passage of this. And it was I, I mean, and I know that was one of the hinge points of this was that boards were going to be sitting there.
Yeah.
And they said, so be it.
Yeah, all right. So the first sentence of one eighty-nine seventy-four implies that the board needs to provide opportunity for public comment. While the second sentence says the period must be no less than thirty minutes. A reasonable reading would be that the opportunity for thirty minutes would suffice. This sample suggests that if not enough speakers are present at the point in the agenda for public comment, the board can table the remainder until the end of the meeting. If no speakers are then present, the board could adjourn.
That's sort of the legal opinion on the legislation.
Yeah. I'm willing to push it to the end a little bit. I mean, I can go back to the School Board Association before you do your second reading and adoption. Because this is just the first reading. But
It may, that's true.
It may make sense to do at the beginning, ten on the middle, ten on the end. And that way.
What's the number of it? What's the
It is one eighty-nine seventy-four.
I guess we wouldn't officially start it until November because we wouldn't, we would have a second reading and adoption next meeting. So, am I right? We could start it next time with that. Or we could get the next layer of opinion. Yeah. Yeah, I think if we are comfortable with this and we do a first reading of it tonight, I think I will have you can see what you can find out.
Yep.
In the meantime, and I think I will have been, let me find out when that webinar is. It is on the oh. October eleventh.
Oh.
I think, I know. Um, but we can find, I mean, we can, we can get some clarification.
Yeah.
It'll just be before that.
Phone call.
Yeah.
All right.
Get it prequel.
Yeah, I know. Can I have the presentation early? Okay, so if we're comfortable with this, let's do, I think that's a good point. We can do a first reading of it tonight and then if we need to amend or adjust that in October, we will. All right.
Laws really are supposed to be reasonable though. So, you know, having a board anywhere or everywhere around the state sitting there for you know, half an hour, just
And that's wasteful. And that was part of the, they, I, I listened to the debate about it. And they said, should, you know, this be changed? And it was, no. They need to sit there.
Yeah, half an hour sitting in silence is
Yes. Yep. Um, with a top. Okay, all right. So we need a motion to approve the first reading of BEDH.
So moved.
So a motion from Leslie.
Second.
And a second from Nancy. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. And any opposed, say nay. All right, our next agenda item is the principal's report. So anything you would like to highlight or add to your report?
Just, we just completed day four. And it's happy. It's, everything seems, everyone's positive and happy and the laughter and the learning. Like I said in here, it's not saying we don't have glitches because we do and we'll have them every day, but we work collaboratively to get through them and to replace the thing. Other than that, it's as written.
I have to say, Mr. Jensen just warmed my heart.
Right, I knew you'd love that.
I, it just maybe you want to bring up my buckets and sticks.
The, um, the posters that you had, the team's main, was so cool and like seeing them on the first night back, but like looking at the, I mean, the years of experience is like the thing that jumps out at you, but the thing that I kept getting lost in was like the other things that people have done and like the degrees that they have and like just the sort of like really interesting, well-rounded depth of experience that's in the building. And it was like
I'll have to look at that more.
Well, you can
It was hard to read.
Yeah. They're hanging out.
Okay.
Yeah.
And what was, oh, the snowball fight, what was that? Oh. So we, and I did this in a conference this summer and I thought it was so great. So I asked everyone what was weighing heavy on them as we went into the school year. Or what they were anxious about or another way, like what was your night before dream gonna be about? And they wrote it on a piece of paper and then we crumpled it up and we had like a ten minute snowball fight where we just kept grabbing paper and chucking at each other. And then at the end, you stand in a circle and you read what's on the paper that you have in your hand. So it's my world. And in the smaller groups that I did it in at the conference, we talked about each one, but we're kind of a large group to do that. So we just kind of did the Grantham village four connection symbol. Um, and some things people talked about for the most part, we just understood that we all had these similarities and we can help each other through them.
I'm so glad.
It was really good.
Any other questions or comments for Kristin? Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
All right, our next agenda item is the superintendent's report.
I'm just basically gonna submit my report as written. However, just a couple of things. It really has been a wonderful opening. So thank you very much, Mrs. Reed. And we are still working on that Pavilion Project. It is delayed at every stage, but we haven't given up. We're, we're still chugging along every day, trying to get that to all happen. And I did want to point out that financially, you're gonna be hearing a lot from me about how we have had since I've been here in the last six years, we've had the most unanticipated specialized costs that we've had. So our budget has already taken a really significant hit. And you may have seen that in some of the budget reports that you've already gotten is that we've already had quite a few lines exceed what we had expected. So we are gonna try and shift as much as we can to cover things with grants, but I'll keep you posted. And then, of course, you saw the spring report from Lebanon, which is always great to see.
Any other questions or comments for Sydney?
Just a comment on the specialized cost. Like, I can't help but think, like, you know, we got, we had wonderfully so many S R funds and COVID grants, but this is our, this is, this is gonna be our, the cost over a long period of time. Yeah.
Right, any other questions or comments? All right, our next agenda item is the consent agenda. Do we have any additions or anything we want to pull out and talk about from the consent agenda? All right. Then we need a motion to approve the consent agenda. So, second, I have a motion from Leslie and a second from Denise. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Okay. Non-public. Yes, you told me yes.
We just have two things. So we'll be going in under RSA ninety-one eight-three-two A and ninety-one eight-three-two E.
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 All right, so, um, when we come out of our non-public session, we don't have any, we won't be taking any votes
No.
After that. So when we come out of non-public session, we'll just be adjourning the meeting. Um, our next meeting is October fourth. Um, and so when we come out of our non-public, we won't restart the Zoom or anything like that. We're just gonna come out of it and adjourn. So for folks that are joining us virtually, this is your chance to say bye to all of us. Um, and hopefully you can join us for our October meeting. Thank you for folks that are continuing to join us virtually. We really appreciate, um, I will just say for myself, I really appreciate people continuing to engage with the board. And come to us, you know, and join us virtually. It's not something that we had before the pandemic times. So seeing people have the chance to be with us that way is really important. So with that said, we need a motion to enter non-public session under RSA ninety-three A three-two A and ninety-one A three-two E.
So moved.
Second, I have a motion from Nancy and a second from Leslie, and this is a roll call vote. So if you are in favor, please say aye. Nancy.
Aye.
Leslie.
Aye.
Ed.
Aye.
Denise.
Aye.
Brittany. Aye. All right, so we are entering non-public at seven fifty-six.